And we have Girl Scout Troop 62,312 here with us today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a moment of silence. Wait a minute, one second, we have a moment of silence, please, for Edward Givler, who's served the town very well. Thank you. He's on the Open Space Committee. All right, good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this is an open meeting being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion. As are other recently recorded meetings and community events, please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. So first on our announcements tonight, we have a certified Mass Municipal Clerk in the building. Please come forward. Dawn Schottall. Dawn, please step to the platform and tell these people what you had to do to accomplish this feat and what it means for the town of Rockland. We have an awful lot of young ladies in the audience who would like to know how to get ahead in the world, and you certainly showed the way.
In order to become a certified Mass Municipal Clerk, you have to have been a clerk for three years, and then you have to take a very long test. They sent it to me and it came in an envelope about that thick, and I thought, oh dear. But it covers everything that happens in our office. Most people don't quite get everything that we do in our office. We do do more than birth certificates and dog licenses. So this test took about a month to actually take, and it was... I took it during all of the drama that was going on in town, so it was a little distracting. But I did pass on the first time. So becoming a certified Mass Municipal Clerk is a good thing for the town. It shows that we are dedicated to the office, and I'm very proud of it, so I thank you.
We want to thank you too. You do a great job over in the corner office on the far side. That is important, it's this corner office, but I'm only teasing you. You do a great job, and congratulations, and thank you very much. Pleasure. Next, we have Girls Group Troop here, and Mr. Olafen.
Good evening, ladies. As a board, I've been in contact with Nicole O'Brien, troop leader, for this great group, 62312. And she sent me a little thing on some work that the girls have been doing. The juniors chose to focus their efforts on promoting childhood literacy within their community. They spent time researching the importance of reading at a young age. By contacting the director of Rockland Daycare, they spent an afternoon reading and sharing the love of books to a group of two- to three-year-olds. The girls created a flyer detailing the importance of reading and shared it with their schools and community at Rockland Day. The Girl Scouts then began contacting local organizations for supplies to build three bookshelves that are now set up at the Dove's Nest, Cathy Corrigan's, and Rockland Daycare. The Girl Scouts hosted multiple book drives and were able to provide each center with over 40 books each. You know what? I'm gonna recognize each girl individually, so when I say your name, just come stand in front here, okay? You're good? All right. Anya Voci? Of course, the first one I say isn't here, all right? Sorry, my wife. Haley O'Brien. Malia Owinnick. Katelyn Kulakowski. Sarah Marcel. Olivia Pumper. Helena Poof. Molly McCrory. Lily Fitzgerald. Kayla Stubert. And Jackie Higgins. So the town of Rockland would like to present to you girls a certificate of recognition of the Girl Scout Troop 62312, in recognition for receiving the Girl Scouts Bronze Award and all the tremendous work Troop 62312 does representing the town of Rockland, Massachusetts, February 19, 2019. Nicole, Kelly, Emery, you guys wanna come up? Accept the award as well? Don't be shy. This is actually being recorded also, so...
Kelly Stubert.
Yeah, Kelly, you're not hiding. Nicole, do you wanna say a few words?
No, I just wanna say how proud I am of these girls. They have worked so incredibly hard for the last year or so to make this happen. They're an amazing group of kids, and they're very community-oriented, and that's really our goal with Girl Scouts. And when they chose childhood literacy, we thought, what better way than to give back by sharing the love of books and reading to all the little ones in town? So they worked extremely hard for months. They built everything from scratch, they hosted all the book drives, they got all the donations, and they're only 10 and 11 years old. So it's amazing to see what they can do as our young youth in Rockland, and I cannot wait to see what they are gonna do in the future, because they're an amazing group and they work well together, and we're really, really proud of them, and I hope everyone else is too.
And one of the girls actually prepared a statement to read. Lily, come on over. I'm a little nervous giving you the microphone. Lily's on my soccer team and is quite vocal at times.
For our Bronze Award, we wanted to focus on the importance of childhood literacy. We know how important it is to read at a young age and wanted to share the love of reading with the children in our town. We took many months to research childhood literacy and what we could do to help. We created a flyer, hosted multiple book drives, and went to local businesses for donations, and in the end, we built from scratch three bookshelves and filled them with books. We delivered them to Cathy Corrigan's Preschool of Rockland Daycare in Dove's Nest. We hope that our bookshelves and books will be used and loved by the children of Rockland for years to come.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. The next under the open forum would be the minutes, open session minutes of February 5, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the open session minutes of February 5, 2019, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's a vote. One abstention. I knew that. Yeah, let's see now. Agenda items, number three, the Dog Dash. Anybody here from representing the dog? Come right up, please. Introduce yourself to everyone.
So I'm one of the boosters, so I'm the representative that was chosen. So we just wanted approval for the 8th Annual Dog Dash, which leaves Eston School, routes down Concord Market, up Moncrief, and then back to Eston. I've received approval from the school committee and from the Rockland Police Department, so...
So is that the relevant statement?
Yes, yes.
There was talk about coming up here, but...
So this year, we decided there was a...
There was a dance?
The dance recital for Hanover, but I booked ahead for next year, so next year, we're gonna try to move the route.
To come up here?
Yeah, yeah, so...
Very good. Pleasure on the board. Any more questions?
Is anybody else on the board planning to participate this year? I know one of us did last year.
Yeah, I ended up having a conflict last year, Mr. Olafen, but I will...
My kids will run, I'm not...
I will do it, and I will beat you at it.
So everyone will be here running? It's a run-walk, it's okay if you don't want...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I did.
I'm running for the town line.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Get a motion and a second, all in favor? Always a yes.
Wonderful.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number four, a one-day license approval. Wine tasting for March 3, 2019, for the Fine Arts Corral at the Trinity Episcopal Church, 37 Belmont Street. Is there anybody here? Come on up.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
You have asked for a March 3 wine tasting?
Wine tasting, yeah.
Wine tasting, I'm sorry, at the Trinity Episcopal Church?
Yes.
Any questions by the board?
Pardon me?
Nope.
Free tickets, is that what you wanted?
What do you want to...
No, 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 no.
No, he wants... We wanted to know if anybody wants to ask her any questions.
So how long will the event take place?
Approximately 3:00 in the afternoon till 4:30 or 5:00.
Okay.
Yeah.
It says you're gonna have train service?
Yes, and we have a professional wine woman who comes and shows us how to drink, as though everybody needed a lesson, right? But we get educated about wine, but it's a fundraiser for the Fine Arts Corral, and we hope we'll have a good group. And I'm going to leave a flyer in the office here, and I encourage, if you've never been to a wine tasting, you can look forward to having a very happy afternoon. It's very... Because we sit at round tables and you get to laugh and talk with the people that you're sitting with, and the wines are very good. She's specializing in South American wines, so she'll educate us about how they're grown in addition to sampling. And there is food pairing with each tasting, and we're going to have six. And it's $40 a person and tables of eight, so it's a very nice afternoon. We purposely scheduled it in the afternoon, so everybody could get home safely. No, I'm just kidding.
Any more questions by the board?
I don't have anything. This looks all looks great, so...
I'll make a motion for the one day.
We get a motion and a second to approve, all in favor? There you go, Marion, good to see you.
Thank you very much.
All the best of luck.
It's a week from Sunday.
Yep.
Week from Sunday, Trinity Church. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, on the community development, Wayne Darrows here to bring us.
Wayne Darrows from Community Opportunities Group, the town's community development consultant. The board should have a memo that I sent to them recently. Our office has received a request for forgiveness on the repayment of a lien. Under the guidelines of the program, on a case-by-case basis, if hardship can be demonstrated, a homeowner may apply for a waiver of a portion of the loan payment or a total forgiveness of the loan through our office. So we received this information from the homeowner. I'm comfortable putting it before the board, because to me, it meets our standard for hardship. This is an individual who participated in our program, the 2006 program. Her project was completed in 2008. She's continued to reside in that home for 11 years since the project was done. Her situation has changed rather dramatically with the loss of her husband and the loss of employment. She's in a situation where she can no longer afford to keep the home. You know, the reason that we put the liens on the properties that we assist is twofold. One is to provide this security when there is a transaction, and the other is to prevent speculation. Someone, you know, may get $20,000 or $30,000 worth of work on their home and decide they can sell it for 50 more than they used to and try and make a quick buck on it. It's clearly not the case here. So it's... It would be my recommendation to the board that they consider waiving the repayment of this loan. The loan amount is $18,100. The projects that were done at this property were of an emergency basis, it wasn't a full case. Person continued to live there, let's say, for 11 years after the work was done, and I'm sure if conditions hadn't changed, the family would continue to reside there.
And up until this point, no issues with making payments, no...
Well, these aren't active payments, these are deferred payment loans. Rich, so what happens is, we put a 15-year note on the property, and the way our program has been set up is that it's a 100% deferred payment loan until the 15 years expires, then it goes to zero. Other communities set them up differently, other communities have declining balances over time. So it just so happens that ours was set up as that 100%. And we've accommodated folks in the past, we've had situations where homeowners have passed, and the children that have inherited the home, rather than make them repay that amount, we've let them take over the lien for the remainder of the term. So this is a case-by-case situation. We don't get these very often, but I think what we're dealing with in this situation does deserve some consideration from the board.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any, Wayne. I just wanted to thank you for the information that you provided and all the backup. Clearly, it is like a situation, like I know each of these as, like as you mentioned, there's like a lot of our discretion, like a need you have to outline in order to make these happen, but, you know, the need is here, so I don't have any problem. I thank you.
As I say, it's a case-by-case basis, I don't think you're setting any precedent here, and this person has given us the information you need to be able to make a decision here.
Kara?
Rich?
No, Michael?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the lien release request for 183 Liberty Street in Rockland.
Get a motion and a second, all in favor? That's a vote. Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks very much.
Town Administrator Search Committee member decisions. All right. We have a bunch of people here tonight that want to be on the committee. I have a couple of write-ins that I'll read at the end. I'm gonna go in order, ask the people to come up and introduce themselves. Donald Kahn, is he here?
Donald Kahn, 64 Union Street.
You're applying for...
The reason why I applied, as you may know, I've spent a lot of time in planning, decades on the planning board, chaired master planned recreation, open space plans, participated in the last open space recreation plan. And with this experience, I think I can do a good job of looking for the new town administrator. I didn't know if anybody with that type of experience would be an applicant, so I put my name into the hat.
Any questions? No? Okay.
Hi, Donald, outside of your work on the planning board, have you had any experience, you know, on a screening committee or hiring in the past?
One time, as a museum manager, I hired retired staff.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Nancy Collins? Introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Sure. My name is Nancy Collins, I live at 637 Union Street. I've been a Rockland resident for about four years. I was heavily involved in the playground program that happened a few years ago at Hard Stuff. I currently work as a Vice President of Human Resources for a nonprofit in Boston that works for senior housing and programs. So over the last two years, my organization went through a major transition of a 45-year president and CEO, so I was both on the transition and search committee. So I worked with an independent search firm to figure out what we really needed internally, figure out what screening question, coordinate interviews with the candidates. So everything from screening the agency that did the search to screening the candidates, leading the conversations around what we're looking for, I've done in the past, so I feel really comfortable doing that and think I could really add value to the process.
Any questions?
Nancy, how long have you held your current role of VP of HR?
I've been in my current... I've been doing HR for about 10 years, I've been a Vice President of HR for about three years, I've been at my current organization for about five years.
Very impressive, thank you, Nancy.
Any more questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy.
How about Kathleen Connors?
I am Kathleen Connors. I live at 1008 Union Street, been a resident of this town for about 58 years. And my interest, I'm just a regular taxpayer, I'm retired, I have the time to devote to committee meetings, I do have some hiring experience, and I just... The main reason why I wanted to apply for a position on the committee was with everything that's happened over the past year, there's been all kinds of grumbling and complaints and, you know, from myself, and I thought it was, when the call came out for somebody to help and support the board in a search for a new administrator, I thought it was just time that, you know, I stepped up. That's it.
I commend you for that. Kathleen, you mentioned you've had some previous hiring experience, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, I worked, when I was working, I worked for a large medical surgical practice, and I was involved with hiring some of the doctors and just the staff, ophthalmic techs and front desk people. And in my other jobs too, I've always been involved in the hiring process.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on our list is Stacy Gardner.
I'd like to say I don't know if I'd be standing here if I knew this was part of the gig, but... My name is Stacy Gardner, I live at 720 Beach Street, and I grew up in Rockland, just recently moved back. When I saw the call come out for folks to be involved in the process, I thought it would be a good match for my background. I've worked in recruitment for, without aging myself, about 15 years, so in a wide variety of positions on the agency side for about eight years, placing finance professionals, and then at Mass General Hospital for about six years, placing a wide variety of positions, everything except physicians. And then wanting to get closer to home, I just started a new job this summer that brought me back to the South Shore, so...
In a HR recruiting?
In recruiting, yeah, yeah.
In a recruiting, okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Next is James Kreslis. Kreslis?
Hi, Jim Kreslis for King Philip's Arkham. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. Never really been involved in any kind of committees on town or any politics, but I saw the, you know, the notice come out and thought I'd give it a shot. I've been in town for about 30 years. All three of my kids went to public school here, live here with my wife. Spent, I have a bachelor's degree in accounting, master's degree in taxation, spent 10 years at Department of Revenue as an auditor, then went to PricewaterhouseCoopers as a consultant for about 12 years, a couple of years at a major defense contractor, and for the last 10 years, I've been Vice President of Tax at a company called Insata Technologies. Recently, some I retired, so now I have time to take on some other things aside the calls. I have spent, done some work in executive search committees. When I was at PricewaterhouseCoopers, it wasn't unusual for my clients to ask me to help out with searches for executives. And in my most recent role as a Vice President, I would sit on just about every search committee for a Vice President below, as senior directors.
So in any of your previous roles, have you actually been the hiring manager versus more of a recruiting?
Yeah, so when I recently retired, I actually, you know, in succession planning, I chose my successor for the new Vice President role, yeah. And yeah, so I would be part of the hiring committee on any of the Vice Presidents in Finance.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Hey, Scott McKinley? That's okay. Didn't they just say it?
My name is Scott McKinley. I've been a resident of the community since 1959. I know I don't look that old, but my wife reminds me daily. I'm a big fan of leadership, always have been in my professional life here in Rockland and outside of Rockland. I've studied leadership styles and how people get other people to work in the best interests, in this case, of the public, because we are public servants. And as soon as we forget that we are public servants, we are ineffective. We cannot represent the community and the taxpayers in the way it should be. I've seen it in this community many times over the years, outstanding leadership, people that I've copied in as many respects in my roles. And it goes beyond the work area, it goes into what you do within the community itself to make that place a better place for the taxpayers. The reason why I'm still living in Rockland after coming here 59 years ago is because I have been able to associate with some great people, just wonderful people that elevated this town. I raised my family here, two of my kids live here, all done extraordinarily well, living in this community and educated in this community. So it hurts people like me, anyway, I'll talk to myself, but it somehow hurts other people who have had the kind of experiences that I've had to see what's going on in our community at this point in time. We need effective leadership at all stages of the game. And leadership, very simply, is a quality that has to have, most importantly, integrity. There's got to be integrity in the people who lead our people and this community. And so my role, if I'm on this committee, is to ensure, to the best of my ability, that we have people who have integrity, people who are willing to sacrifice themselves to the benefit of the public. I'm proud to be a public servant, and to take an 84-year-old guy and get him riled up like this here is a little unusual. And in my sunset years, as you can tell, but it's important, it's very, very important. Two of my kids still live here. Two of my kids still live here, our taxpayers, raise their families here too, and they need good representations like all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley, in your previous role, what hiring experience have you had? I had to throw it out there.
I'm glad, that's okay. I appreciate it.
Hey, Chuck, you're not alone.
Well, there's two edges to that sword. You hire and you fire. I've done both. In some cases, it's very, very difficult; in other cases, it's very, very easy, because you're doing it in the best interests of the district, or in my case, the school system that you represented. And to ensure that the students in this town have the best possible educators and the best possible role models that we can put in front of them. I had a military background before I came to Rockland. That helped a bit. And in my other capacities, mostly in a volunteer public service, and I want to emphasize public service. You know, it's an honor to represent the public. If you ever get in that position, as I have been, it's an honor. I walked in here tonight, half a dozen people come up and ask me how I am. Anybody ask you how you were? Because I was a public servant here. So, to answer that question in one or two words, impossible. I've let some people go and we've hired some people, and every single case, in my opinion, has benefited for the betterment of the system and the students that we represent. It goes beyond, you got me started.
More hours.
More detention.
Yeah, watch it. But it goes beyond the working area too. It goes beyond, as you were, if you live in a community and you work in a community and what have you, what you give back to that community. What do you give back to that community? Well, we started the youth commission, still, and we started that for the kids in this town. All right? We run a capital planning committee. First time in the history of the town, we had a capital planning committee. Has it done a good job for the selectmen? You're darn right it is. And it's the way it should have been a long time ago. Selectmen made a decision, pointed a few people, volunteers, and we represented that town as a public servant. I keep on emphasizing that term, because sometimes when people get into roles, they forget they have to represent the public. So, I'm sorry. I'm long-winded. My wife is watching.
She's not going to be happy with you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley.
I bypassed Will Linehan. Sorry, there's a mistake.
We caught it.
I want to entertain you guys as much as Mr. McKinley does.
I'm sure you will. Thanks, Will.
My name is Will Linehan. I live over on Harthouse Street. I'm a blow into town. I'm on here 25 years or so. I own and operate my small construction company. So, I have experience in hiring and firing people. I suppose it comes both ways, like, you know. I've had the privilege, my kids have had the privilege of going, enjoying the new school we've put up here. Lots of good things happening in Rockland over the last 25 years, I've seen, and some things that we're not so proud of neither, you know what I mean? And if it's up to me, the people of Rockland shouldn't have to go through what they went through over the last year, over the last 12 months, you know? Publicity like that town doesn't need, you know? So, that's why I threw my hat in the ring. I got a bit more time on my hands now. The kid's, the English one's on his way out of the high school, so that's my story.
Thank you. All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McKinley.
Thank you.
Will, thank you very much.
All right, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thomas Mills.
Thomas Mills, Jr. 67 Exchange Street, Rockland. I moved in town in '63, graduated from high school in '65, and Mr. McKinley was the, you were.
You were something.
You were something. I know. You were something. Talking, you know. That was one of the things, it was the hottest thing I ever did do, was the first time I had to talk to you. Give you a little about my background. I'm on the school committee in Rockland. I think I'm just finishing up my 16th year. And one of the things that I found is, when I looked at this and I saw this, it was that the TA is a key individual in this town. And I think, you know, our need to get the right person is essential for the operation of this town. I'll give you some of my background. I have a bachelor's degree in business from BU. I have a master's degree in technology management from Bridgewater State. And one of the couple, some of the jobs I had, I've been president of the Boston Stock Exchange Service Corporation, which ran all the technology for the exchange. At the same time, I also worked for companies like GE. I was at GE. I was consulting service manager for all of the New England area. I had 120 consultants that I had to keep on hiring and firing and working with and recruiting. Resumes, I used to probably go through 60, 70 resumes a week, looking for people and talent in that way. I've had jobs at First Data Corporation, and currently, I am a junior ROTC instructor, Army JOT instructor in Boston Public Schools. That's my retirement job, you know? That's why, you know, so I can have the summers off. And currently, that's what I'm doing. And I appreciate the opportunity of coming up in here and talking to you about that, and I hope you give me consideration for helping this. Oh, yeah, I also was on the search committee for the superintendents of the schools. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom.
Linda Sternfeld.
Hi, I'm Linda Sternfeld. I live at 34 Winter Circle. I've lived in Rockland since 2001, and I have been in banking for almost 35 years. I've been a hiring manager for about 25 of those years. I'm currently the senior credit officer at a mutual savings bank in Taunton, $2.1 billion bank. And I just, I'd like to get involved with the town, and I thought that this would be a really good opportunity to do that.
Any questions?
So, you're currently in a role where you are hiring, firing, entry level, mid-level, senior level, where?
Right now, I've got 30 resumes on my desk for entry-level jobs. I've hired, you know, I've hired officers, I've hired staff, I've done...
So, you've done mid-in?
I've done all of it, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, for the teams that I led.
Yeah.
For the entire organization.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda, thank you very much.
I'm going to read to people who couldn't be here tonight, Daniel Biggins. Honorable members of the Board of Selectmen, my name is Dan Biggins. I write to you today, express my will to serve on the Town of Rockland Screening Committee for the position of town administrator. This endeavor is an important and exciting one, and I believe my experiences serving the people of Rockland make me best suited to be part of this process. I am proud to be a business owner in this wonderful community. Through my family's work at McGoon Biggins Funeral Home, we strive not only to serve Rockland's family in their time of needs, but to make our community a better place for all of us. I have served on the Rockland School Committee for the last six years. Currently, I serve the role as chairman. Thank you for your consideration for my application to serve on the Town Administration Steering Committee. If you, if selected to serve, I promise to approach the task with integrity and vigor. And one more from Mary Parsons. Due to a weather-related meeting cancellation, I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight. The cancellation is scheduled. I applied for this committee because I had past experience as a select person with the new town administrator who's hired, not the present town administrator. I am familiar with the screening process and confidentiality involved, and want to see qualified candidates brought forward to the Board of Selectmen. I am glad to see so many residents apply for the committee, and that's signed, Mary Parsons. We've decided that the, each board member is going to choose someone for the committee, and we're going to go in reverse order, if you will, as far as experience, if, or timing. And first number one will be Karen Nyman.
I want to thank everyone who has applied to be on the Town Administrator Search Committee. We've got a great group of people who applied, and I just want to thank everyone who stepped up to this important task and process that we are going to see moving forward. It's an important time for Rockland, and hopefully, we are in the right direction. So, that being said, I would like to appoint Stacy Gardner for the Town Administrator Search Committee. I'm impressed with her 15 years of experience in HR and recruiting. I also am very impressed with her involvement in the community, especially with Rockland Cares. So, I'd like to appoint Stacy to the committee.
Okay. Mr. Penny.
So, first off, I am extremely happy with the turnout and the interest in this role. As everyone knows, the past year, this town has had some struggles. And part of it is, it's been a challenge, trying to get people in town involved. This went out, and I don't think a lot of people thought we were going to get, not only the number of people, excuse me, in battle on the cold, but the quality of the candidates have just blown me away. This is by far the most difficult decision that I've had since I've been on the board. I don't think you can go wrong with just about any candidate that has applied. With that being said, I hope that, for those that do not get chosen, that this is not the end, that this is the beginning, because there are so many needs for this town. There really are. We need quality people to step up. With that said, my choice is a gentleman who I've known for a long time and has shown a lot in his past for what he does for the town in different roles, and continuing at this time to be an active member. And pretty impressed at 84 with the energy and the vigor that he walked up here with. So, my choice is Ace Scott McKinley.
Mr. O'Loughlin.
Thank you. Well, Rich pretty much said it all. We had a great pool of candidates that applied for these positions. It is a very important position in the town. Obviously, everybody knows what we went through over the past year, and I appreciate everybody stepping forward to help, assist, and leading us out of this. One of my positions with, as well as being on the Board of Selectmen, is I have been pretty much in charge of the downtown development for Reimagine Rockland. So, I think for me, I am going to choose Dan Biggins as a business owner in this town, a taxpayer. Says he's on the school committee now, but that's, he's not up for reelection, so he will have the time to give to it. So, Dan Biggins is my choice.
Mr. Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, I could go on and on what Mr., I like about what Mr. O'Loughlin, like Mr. Penny and Ms. Nyman said, but I like, again, the caliber of folks who applied, like it's, like, as I mentioned before, the last hour a year has been extremely frustrating, and it's made me wonder, oh, frankly, would I volunteer my time for? I like, many, many times over and over again, and, but tonight, I have hope and, oh, knowing that there are people that seriously, and there are serious people out there who share the same values and pride that, oh, frankly, we all share about our town. So, I just want to thank everyone as well. I, like, if I had to make a recommendation, I'd do, obviously, because that's why we're here. Go figure. I like, I would recommend Nancy Collins to serve on the screening committee. Like, I think the experience she brings from her professional background, like, is very important, but also the work that she's done, like, in Rockland, like, and really representing, in my opinion, oh, you know, oh, like, a new Rockland. And, oh, we're trying to attract young families here, like, have young families take pride in Rockland the same way we do. And I think Nancy really gets that, like, her work, like, with, oh, the Harthouse Park organization really speaks to that. And so, Nancy, if, like, if you accept, I nominate you, so. No problem.
God, that was awkward. I'm not going to beat around the bush, because these guys have done that plenty. I'm already kidding. I'm really for new people, and with that being said, I'm going to vote for James Christless and appoint him to the committee. And I really want to thank everybody who took the time to put their names in and expose themselves to the public of Rockland, because it's very important that we get people to come out here and join us. You know, we sit up here all the time, and nobody minds taking the heat, and nobody minds doing the job, but it's always good to get some new, you know, young people involved, become part of the town. I always tell people it's a good thing to come out, and not only do you get to help the town make decisions, but you meet an awful lot of good people, and when you walk down the street from now on, you're going to have another 100 people saying, "Hi, how are you? Hi, yeah, nice to see you again. How's things going?" And then they can hound you about all the things going on in the town like they do us. No, but it is, it's, it can be a lot of fun, and it's, you know, it's a demanding job, and it's challenging at times, but we're up for the challenge. Are you? So, come, I'm glad you all joined us. Thank you for, the five that have been appointed. Thank you for those others who aren't, who don't give up. Please come and help us. We need help in plenty of places, and we look forward to serving you. I'm going to entertain a motion to, just to formalize this, that we appoint these five people, Stacy Gardner, Ace Scott McKinley, Dan Biggins, Nancy Collins, and James Christless.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, welcome aboard, everyone, and please do your best.
I truly want to thank every single person who applied for this. Honestly, I really appreciate that. And like I said, I hope, if you weren't chosen, that this is not the end. I hope this is the, just the beginning of seeing this group around, because pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. All right. The next is Fire Station Committee Presentation.
Last minute, decision to print out a slow matrix for you. Good evening, board. Thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight for this. Back in September, October, I believe it was September, we had two gentlemen from Schwartz and Silver and one, Robert Mitchell Associates. All three are architects that came and gave an incredible presentation on a potential future fire station for the Town of Rockland. You know, extensive work has gone into this between the committee members, and I have to thank them for their hard work and volunteers in helping us go through all this. What it came down to is that the committee sat down, we looked at the town as a whole, chose a few sites for the architects to look at and to determine, you know, where best a fire, a modern fire station could fit. The three sites that were reviewed were the current location at 360 Union Street, the McKinley School property on Union Street where the current community center is, and then the third is the old Lincoln School, 99 Church Street. I know three out of the five members of the board had seen the presentation here, and then I had met with Mr. Penny and Ms. Nyman to get them caught up. They saw the presentation. I didn't do it half as justice as the architects did, but I think we did, what I did was, I got the idea of what needed to. Okay, thank you. I probably bored the death out of you, so I think I only have another minute, because I told Marcy I'd only be two minutes, so. So, the architects looked at each site, and they looked at, does the footprint of a modern fire station fit that site? The site frontage, what is the access? Do we have enough site front to pull fire trucks in and out safely? The third is apparatus configuration. Is it going to be a back-end station like we currently have, or is it going to be a station where some of the bays can be pulled through for the larger trucks? Parking, parking, you know, parking for the public, parking for the firefighting staff, and parking for the administrative staff. Open space, what do we have around it? Are we going to be, are the firefighters going to be able to train? Are we going to be able to pull trucks out and service them, work on them, work on the tools? That was one of them. Location. Location, what's the location like? Fire station, we respond to emergencies from quarters. We often play the magical truck game of what truck we have to take to a call, where the police officers are, with police departments a little different, they're out patrolling, fire departments don't do that. So we need to have a centralized location. Residential impact, what would that be like for the residents throughout the area that we would be, you know, living next to? If there were any environmental restrictions, any hazardous materials on the sites? Existing programs, what currently is at each of those sites now? And then the last is the ownership and property acquisition. Who owns the site? And, you know, would we have to acquire any property? As you look at the matrix I have in front of you, the first site is the fire station, the current fire station. Right now, a modern fire station would not fit there. The site frontage, we don't even have enough room to pull a ladder truck out. Apparatus is all back in bays. Parking, we have barely enough parking now for the current staff. Open space, we have to go elsewhere to train. Sometimes we can train on the side yard or in the little driveway we have in the backyard, but most often than not, we are down at a different training site. At the highway department's very good for allowing us to use it as a training site. Water department property is very good, and also border health allows us to use the landfill. Location, the location for all three sites that we're gonna present are right within the center of town. Response district is not affected in any way, so that works. Residential impact, currently, right now, the current fire station, it is what it is. The people around us know what it is, and they've lived with it. The second site is probably 100 yards down the street, and again, there would be some new neighbors, but for the most part, those neighbors are used to having a fire station within 100 yards of their houses. Third site, which is the Lincoln School site, that would be, it would be a new impact on the neighborhood, a neighborhood I'm very familiar with. I only live a very short walking distance from it, so it's, it'd be new to them, but, you know, as I would assure anybody, you know, the firefighters are good neighbors in most cities, you know, there's a lot of good neighborhoods that are centered around the fire departments themselves. Environmental restrictions, for the most part, we don't have any on any of the three sites, except with the, there may be a wetland issue down behind the McKinley School on Union Street. Demolition, demolition, we would have to, you know, perform a demolition on all three sites. If we were to build a modern fire station, we couldn't retain any of what's there. The big red flag that we're, that is kind of looming above us and really detracts from the McKinley School site is that that building is on the, is listed or registered on the historic register. So that is, that's a big hurdle to remove a building off that. It can be done according to the architects, but there are numerous hurdles. Then the existing program displacement. Right now, the existing program at the fire station, if we were to build the current station site, which, there's too many red flags here, but we would have to relocate at an additional cost. We'd have to relocate to see, and live, not in temporary quarters. At the McKinley School, we have, we have the current youth commission, we have the Rockland daycare, we have multiple programs that use that facility. Where would those go? We'd have to find new homes for those facilities. So that's marked as a red flag on your matrix. And then the Lincoln School site, it's nothing, it's a vacant property at this time. Then ownership of the property, property acquisition. All three properties are owned by the town of Rockland. If the fire station, we would have to acquire numerous properties behind it if we were to build a modern fire station at the current site. The other two sites would be able to fit a modern fire station on them. So based upon the matrix in front of you, the far right is the Lincoln School. You can see it's mostly green, the station would fit there, very little yellows, where the other two, you know, there are concerns with. The McKinley School site would be a good site, but I believe the largest hurdle with that site is going to be the building itself. So based upon the architect's recommendations, the committee's recommendations, you know, we seek approval for the Lincoln School as the potential new location for a Rockland Fire Department. And so I asked the Board, seeing that we are an ad hoc committee under the Board, for your approval on that, so that we could start moving forward with, you know, bringing a new fire station to the townspeople of Rockland.
Questions, Mr. Muller?
I, like, as many people would know, like I said, on the Fire Station Building Committee, and all the charge that the committee had was all to use a sparingly, $80,000 approved to us at town meeting, and all to really try to stretch that $80,000, like, in many, many, many different ways. All to look at, as the chief mentioned, the programmatic needs and, like, as well as, you know, the land that the town and the property that the town already owns. So what we did and what the committee voted on, all to recommend here, was the Lincoln School site, which, like, I agree with based on our options. I, like, I do, however, have all significant concerns. Frankly, our last May's town meeting, I'll be in one of them. It was very clear from that, that the residents in the neighborhood, as well as other people throughout the community, because I think it was broader than the neighborhood, they really didn't know what they were really arguing against, like, in terms of the demolition. So I think to move this forward, like, we need all to really educate people, what the current condition is of that building, what we hope to do there, and to really, you know, let them know, and quite frankly, we do have all these needs as a town, and it's impossible financially to save them all, but equally, as important, we have our buildings that needed to be repaired and replaced. My father was a firefighter for 40 years in the building of the street, and I can only imagine all the fumes and everything, you know, he inhaled. And actually, there was an article in Today's Boston Herald about the fact that our fire stations in many communities like ours are completely outdated. So, like, I agree with the recommendation that the committee made, but I do think we, we as a town, we as a fire station committee have to really do some serious outreach, to let the public know, you know, how we ended up here. But I, like, I also think as well, with all due respect to the fire station, our committee, like, it's been like a very small group of people, and frankly, with folks, like, with one connection or another to the fire station we have now. And I would actually love going through the town administrator search process we have right now, and the town owned search process we have right now as well, and, you know, and when those two new individuals come in, to take a look at what they've done, like, we've done, I'm sorry, and, you know, to kind of give some, our fresh eyes to this whole thing, like, a holistic view of all of our needs as a town, and help us chart out a plan to hopefully make this possible, so. But as I mentioned, considering, you know, we had the options available to us, and we have a space that does have the, you know, with the land there, it has, oh, really what we need for, like, a modern day, our fire station there, you know, I do support it, but I think, I do think we have a lot more work to do as a town, so. I guess I don't have any questions, so it's just a statement, so. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
So thank you for putting this together. I did meet with the chief a few weeks ago and took a tour of the fire station. There are immediate needs that need to be addressed at the fire station, and I know, obviously, this project is going to make taxes rise a little bit, but personally, I don't think this project can wait much longer. We see in the news every day about all these firefighters getting diagnosed with cancers and whatnot, and I just think this is an immediate need for the town and for the people who are on the front lines protecting us and our neighbors, and I am in support of this project. Ideally, I didn't like the Lincoln School site at first, but once the chief kind of took me through the process of the current fire station, obviously, that doesn't fit. The McKinley School isn't suitable, and that will displace other programs. I just think this is our best option right now, and it's kind of what we have to deal with going forward, and I am in support of this.
Mr. Penny?
Chief Duffy, have you looked at any other sites other than the three town-owned sites that would meet the needs, you know, as far as response time and anything else?
So at the time, we took a map, we sat as a committee, probably the first two meetings, we sat as a committee, looking at every site within the geographical center of the town We looked at specifically town-owned sites. Other sites have become available to, you know, today. Example is the Rite Aid site.
That wasn't available at the time when you started.
At the time, it wasn't. I don't know if it's even still available today. It's a potential site. Is it big enough? We don't know. Would we have to acquire land to make it potential? Possibly, but...
Would it meet your response time?
We would be just out of the, it would be a little bit more distance of response down towards the highway, towards the northeast end of town. But what's it going to add? That, that's prime real estate property.
Yep.
Right at the corner, right, you know, entrance off of the, right through the plaza or at a set of lights, big parking lot. What is that going to cost additional on top of what is already, you know, going to be asked for for a fire station?
Did you, did you guys have, as a committee, did you have any public meetings or meetings with the potential residents that would be impacted, whether it was at the McKinley site or at the Lincoln School site?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. Our meetings were attended by the public, specifically, you know, the neighborhoods around it. I did meet with neighbors of the Lincoln School, brought them through the current existing, you know, structure, explained to them, you know, what it was, and I, you know, I made that offer very clear to everybody at the meeting, you know, more than happy to sit down and discuss and meet with them, and, you know. The plan going forward is, is that the architects still have, you know, they still owe us a couple of public meetings, and those meetings would be with the neighborhood.
Gotcha.
Neighborhood, neighbors. My goal is, I would love to get, once we do get a site selected, to get, you know, neighbors on the building committee, to get their input, you know, and their feedback, you know, we would be, you know, their new neighbor and part of the neighborhood at that point.
Okay. And I just wanna say thank you. I did take a tour of the, of the fire station. While I've been in there before, I never took a, as in-depth tour as I had before, and it is a small footprint for the number of firefighters and the, and the equipment that we have, and I was kind of amazed where their safety gear that is much needed, where it's stored, and it is an issue, definitely is an issue.
We are. At the time, it was a modern facility, it was a great facility, it has served the town well, and in the future, I believe it could serve the town well, but maybe not just as a fire station.
I'm good. How long has this fire building committee been in place?
I was appointed maybe two years? Has it been two years? Yeah, I don't know the exact date.
Two years? So you guys have been working on this for, what, you said two and a half years?
We have been on and off, yes, we have been on and off, yes, working on it, yes.
So, you know, I've talked to you several times, and I've known you as somebody that always does their due diligence. You know, I wasn't initially a fan of the Lincoln School site, you know, and I've talked a couple of times about it. I grew up, for part of my life, near the fire station, and I always considered you guys to be great neighbors. And you guys don't even use the fog horn that much anymore, right?
Then, since we've switched to dispatch, the horn has been used less often.
So I am in support of the Lincoln School site, and just with that being said, you know, it's important to let residents know, we're not voting to put a fire station in that site tonight. We're voting to allow the committee to go forward with plans for a site that you would present at town meeting at some point down the line.
And absolutely, and I agree 100% with you, you know, we can focus on a site, but that doesn't mean that if a more optimal site opens up tomorrow, that we don't look at that. Correct.
My wife works at the fire station, and she works right behind the engines in a little office. When they pull into there, they pull out of there, and they, they have exhaust vents and everything like that, but there are those few moments that, when they're backing in and pulling out, that the exhaust goes underneath the door. I've been in the room, everybody's been there. It's not the world's best conditions. It was a great, it was a great, and it's that day, but now it's just too small, and there's no space to put it up there. And we would have to take one of the houses behind it, make the whole footprint now, a single floor that just held engines or whatever.
We'd be, we'd be looking at probably three or four houses in the rear of the fire station to make it fit.
Right. And the McKinley School is, you know, that's a historical register, that's, you know, it's a $15 million revamp if we want to even use the building ourselves, and we're looking into that, to preserve it and to use it again, but it's a very expensive proposition. The Lincoln School is the best spot for it, quite frankly, and, you know, sometimes you have to just say to those citizens in the neighborhood, you know, it's for the betterment of the town, and it's a very difficult decision to make, and over the years, I've had to make them, the lights that hang them in Market Street that we had down there, we have accidents all the time. The neighbors didn't want lights, because then it would back them up, the people are gonna be parked in front of the yard, they can't get out, blah, blah, blah. You know, we offered them solutions, and, no, we offered them solutions, and we made it, and it turned out to be a good thing, so.
Luckily, what you just said is, choosing the Lincoln School, we are not choosing a site.
Why, no, we're not, but I'm just saying.
So we're not?
That sometimes you just have to, you know, people do have to...
If that ends up being a site, but I want to be clear, we are not choosing the Lincoln site.
I said that, I do. No, I agree, I'm for it. I don't know if I'm allowed to vote for it, no, I feel like frankly, because my wife works for you, but I'm definitely for the site, as presented. So what would be the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make a motion that we allow the chief and the fire building committee to move forward with plans on the Lincoln School site.
Second that.
Okay, give me the motion in a second. All in favor?
Hold on. So I want to be clear here. So I'm taking from this that the Lincoln School site has not been the chosen site yet. It is the preferred site.
I am asking that the Board choose the Lincoln School site as, right now, as the best site for the, to continue to move forward.
As the preferred site.
For them to base their plan on.
As the preferred site.
Which is why I said it in that manner.
I'm okay.
They should plan, to base their plan.
With the preferred, as the preferred site.
But again, if a more optimal site presents itself, then, then, yes, you know...
Right, all right. So I just want to be clear, it's going forward as the preferred site right now. Yep.
May I suggest that we ask Attorney Clifford to weigh in on the correct language for the motion in this instance? He's here in the audience.
I think the way the Board's expressing it is appropriate. It's really just indicating support so that the committee can move forward and spend money on the architectural plans, and that's what I understand. There's nothing binding that finalizes this as the site. There are several votes that would presumably go to the town before that it would be finalized.
So my motion was simply to...
As a preferred site.
To allow the committee to move forward with plans with this as their preferred site. I can add preferred.
Yeah.
With this as their preferred site, with plans for the fire station.
Can we have four votes and a...
No, I'm good with that.
Five votes.
With the way that motion is, I'm good.
And we'll close with a vote. Thank you.
I second that.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Wood, thank you very much for your help and assistance. I really have to thank the fire station building committee for putting in the work and getting this done, and choosing the architects, and looking at sites, and, you know, we at the fire station, we do greatly appreciate the work everyone's been putting into it, so thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, number eight, town administrators' report in correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any town administrator comments this evening.
That's beautiful. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Ms. Nyman?
I don't think I have anything tonight, but thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mullin, it's not going to be down this end?
No, I don't have anything either. Thank you.
I get office hours this Thursday morning, 9:30 to 11:00 at the senior center, and I do want to congratulate the Rockland High School winter sports teams, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and the hockey for making the tournament again. For the boys' and the girls' basketball, their streak is unbelievable, so congratulations to them.
Just Al Oaflin?
Just a reminder, Restaurant Week will be starting March 3rd through March 9th this year. Currently, we have 22 participating restaurants. I'm waiting on three more. It'd be nice to have the 25. A couple of different restaurants this year. China Plaza's participating this year, 99's participating, Jack's Cafe. So there's a lot of different places up there. March 9th is also Rockland's 145th birthday, so we're still trying to work out the plans, final details for some sort of a celebration for the town of Rockland.
And I had the pleasure of a bunch of second grade students invading the town office the other day, and listen to me express myself about how the town is running, what a great job I was doing, and they should all say wonderful things about me. But it was really good, and I want to thank Jan Sheen and Maria Coveney and Julian McKenna and Mike Jenna Mullen for bringing the kids over. They sang a song to me, which I was very impressed with, and they sent a bunch of Valentines over, and there's some really good ones in here, and, well, some of, most of them just say thank you, but one says wants to thank us for our service, not correctly spelled, but that's okay. And then the dear town hall, thank you for all the stuff you do. So it was really cute, and they were really nice, and they asked some pretty intelligent questions, quite frankly, and they're hip on the news because they asked me about the, what happens if we shut down the government in Rockland? I mean, not much, they don't pass. But anyway, it was fun, and I was glad to have them, and I hope they come again. With that, we have executive session tonight to discuss strategy regarding collective bargaining and to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to enter into executive discussion session to discuss strategy regarding collective bargaining, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to reconvene.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Oaflin?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan says yes also. Thank you, everybody, and good night.